So I think we can call the meeting to order. Yeah. Oh, it looks as if we have a quorum. You agree, John?
Yeah, I, Deanie knows this, I got a notice from Katie that I have to be sworn in before I can vote. So I can't officially vote at this meeting, which means we do need to name an alternate.
But we have.
We have four.
We have four commissioners here.
And then a, but name a fifth, so there's a, of, a full quorum voting.
Okay. Which one of you, do you remember who was designated last time?
David says it was you last time?
Yeah, okay. So we'll designate Ed then to vote today. Okay. Um, so do we have a, a motion to approve the minutes of the January 6th meeting?
I'm moved.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments? Aye. Motion passes.
And who, who was the second on that?
Ed.
Ed. No, he was the first.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, you were the first. Carolyn was second.
Ed, Ed was the first, Carolyn was the second, Martha.
Thank you.
Um, public comment. Seeing no one here, we can move to the co-chairs' report. Would you like to begin, John?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much to, much to say. I wanted to thank David for, I, I think, pinning down the last bit of map information we need in order to get a, a GIS, a full GIS map of the, of the boundaries. And Russ, are you able to coordinate that? You've been the.
Yes.
Person with those folks.
Yes, I will, John. Uh, I, I received it from David, and I think that's exactly the information we need. I'm gonna try to, try to share that or draw or whatever it takes to communicate that to the GIS people, and then they'll have to, uh, update the online GIS boundary.
You got the maps via email.
Via email. Oh, do you have a hard copy? That would be great, too.
Um, okay, and then, uh, the other note is that there is a.
Thank you.
An FOI, FOIA update meeting on February 26th, I believe. I don't have the time in front of me that everyone on the commission is urged to attend. Uh, I believe Deanie and I are both out of town and unable to attend. Uh, do you have the time of that, Deanie, by chance?
I.
I can look it up. It was on an, it was on an email.
It was on an email from Katie.
Yeah. Yeah.
Seven PM.
Seven PM?
Seven PM.
It's, it's a meeting to explain how FOIA works, the freedom of everybody, um, so that everyone is. Go ahead.
Also, also to go over up, updates on, on FOIA. So we'll, we'll send out a reminder about that, but just if, if anyone is able to, to go, it's, it's, uh, it would be helpful if at least one person could go so that we're, they can communicate any, any late developments that we need to be aware of.
And what's the date?
Twenty-sixth of Feb. It's a Wednesday?
Yes.
Right?
And then, uh, Deanie, I think that's all I, I had.
All right. Um, well, the first thing that I'd like to do is to congratulate our member, Carolyn Wakeman, on being the All Lime Citizen of the Year for 2020. We appreciate your support. Thank you very much. Turns out she does a lot of things other than sit on the HTC. So anyway.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're, we're proud to have her on our, among us. So congratulations.
Thank you, Deanie.
Um, two other things. Uh, number thirty-three Lime Street and number thirty-one Lime Street have both been sold and completed and have new owners. Um, thirty-three was the former Wiker House and, right, and thirty-one was the Hinckley House. So we should probably send, um, Martha, we should probably send the, the letter or send what we had, 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 what we had.
Okay.
Okay.
Everything's doubling now.
Okay. There does appear to be a new fence.
Everybody, please mute if you're not speaking. Maybe that'll help.
Well, something, something went wrong here.
It did indeed. Anyway, let's keep moving. It's.
Um, there does appear to be a new, uh, small fence at the back of the driveway at number thirty-three. Um, and, uh, the last piece of news I have, if you don't already know, is that the ice cream shop is on, officially on the market. For seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I don't, I don't.
Do you want me to get Katie? I'll get Katie. And, and one other thing, the, the small sign.
I'm gonna have to try to log in again.
There, that's better, John.
Is that better?
John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, am I still on?
Yeah, you're still on. I think you're good now.
Yeah, I just can't see you now, but that's all right.
Okay.
I also have to find my computer cord to, so we don't run out of power.
All right.
I'll be back.
Stop.
Okay. Sorry, getting drunk.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, number five on, on my list is that the small sign at the Florence Griswold Museum that sits sort of below the main sign has changed. The sign itself appears to be the same, but the content has changed. So I don't think that's something that concerns us.
Right.
Right? Okay. Um. Secretary's report? Martha?
Hello. Yep, I'm here.
What, what, one second?
I, I think it's fixed itself.
Was it fixed?
Yeah.
Sorry, Katie.
John, anyways.
He was afraid of me.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got John.
Yeah, I think we're good now, so.
Is it sound okay?
It was, it was, uh, repeating itself, and we had John twice on the screen for a minute, if you're.
And the sound was replicated. Thank you, Katie.
All right. All right, Martha, secretary's report?
Um, yes. Okay, so.
Okay, I'm back.
We. So can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. Um, okay, so we are monitoring ten situations um, with active CFAs or, um, other things. Um, not much has changed since last month, so we're still looking at six Lime Street picket fence, uh, which needs repair. Thirty-eight Lime Street renovations continue. Forty-nine Lime Street Center School, front door bluestone walkway, um, still needs to be completed. The fifty-seven Lime Street, uh, exterior mechanical units to be screened, and they are on the agenda today. Uh, seventy-four Lime Street, the new house. Looks like they've started doing more things there. Um, eighty-four Lime Street, still house roof replacement. Uh, looks like that's a like-for-like. We're still waiting for official word on that. Uh, the ninety-six Lime Street Florence Griswold Museum fence. There's still a few things that they're going to do on that, I think, to close the gap on the bottom there. Uh, ninety-seven Lime Street Garden Shed, that has not been started yet. And the Halls Road Sidewalk Proposal. Um, I think we're gonna hear more about that later in the meeting. Uh, we also got a like-for-like form from, uh, Debbie Wade at sixty-one Lime Street. Uh, she's putting on a new roof and gutters, but there's no change in style or materials. That will be completely like-for-like. Uh, the Historic Plaque Program, sixty-two Lime Street, no update on that. Uh, but I am actively working on twenty-three Ferry Road, uh, to see if I can determine the date of that, uh, the official date of when that house was built. That was supposedly an old soap factory. So I expect to have that wrapped up very soon. Um, and we have some more webpage updates, the, uh, Historic District Map, and some handbook revisions, which will be posted on the webpage. And that's all I have.
Martha, is the, uh, are the signage guidelines up now?
They are.
Okay. Uh, but the, the handbook revisions that we passed a few, couple of years ago are not, not yet up?
They're not yet up. I expect those to, uh, go up this week because they included the map, the new, the map that we approved in, uh, twenty-twenty-two, I think.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I'm a bit of a, uh, somehow the voice at this, at my end got cured, but I can't see any of you, so. If I'm ta, if I say something, you just have to interrupt. I can't, I can't judge body language.
All right. Um, is that, that's all, Martha?
That's all I have, yeah.
Great, thank you. And now Children's Learning Center, Marie Ryan.
Hi, I'm Marie Ryan.
Yep.
I'm one of the board, doesn't matter where I sit. I'm one of the board members. I'm also on the point, one of the, the people for the renovation that we did. Um, you've come a long way. You really have. There's so, do you ever wanna come inside and see? Please come inside. There's what we're talking about today. So the last thing that we have left to do, um, for our COA, was to cover our split outside, um, that can be clearly seen from the road. I think I just know. To cover ours, our split from the road.
Yep.
And, um, originally, we had talked about putting some kind of plantings there that would completely cover it. And then when, um, Martha reminded us, and, you know, just things, just, everything just kind of snowballed, you know, trying to get everything complete, getting this, you know, everything was pushed back. The more we did, the more we uncovered, the more things we had to correct. And then by the time we got our CO, we had to send it out to the state. The state had to come back and, you know, re-license us. So there was a lot going on. Um, but then when Martha reminded us that we've got to, um, put some kind of screen, and originally, we had talked about putting planting screens in front of it, but then Martha suggested, she, one of the suggestions also was something similar to what they have at the Historic Commission, or, excuse me, Historic Society. So I called over there, I ended up talking to a Ted Freeman, who had built their screen, and then he directed me to Edie, who said, oh, I'm sure I'll do the drawings for you. So that's what she came up with. Um, I think that's something we'd like to do to cover it and then eventually, um, put plantings around it so that we can keep the airflow and the circulation, um, in front of the screen, so that we had, will have removable panels. So if we have to do any type of maintenance to it, we can get to it. So that's where we are right now. Um, we are asking for an extension because the ground is frozen and we, we couldn't put the posts in and, you know, the cement and everything that is needed.
Sure. I think this looks very nice.
The, the only question I have is really not related to us, but does the, um, electric folks, do they need access to the meter?
I think so. So that, that's something I need to follow up on. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I can follow up on that. Yeah, that's a good question, because I saw it was being covered.
Right.
Um, part of the window will be covered as well.
Just wondering if, I mean, it may be that they do it all electronically now.
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's a good question.
That would be something to, to check. I guess that would mean that it would, i- if you had to not cover that.
We would have the panels that could be removed.
Could be removed, too.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, make it easy access to get in there.
It looks nicer to cover it. Yeah, yeah, but.
Yeah, and eventually, as I said, we will be putting plants around it, but, um, we haven't.
Right.
Our landscaper came up with a plan, but it's not, we wanted a whole comprehensive plan for the whole front as well. Um, 'cause he's like, oh, put some varieties here, put some boxwoods, you know, call it a day. Um, but we wanna come up with a nice, comprehensive plan, organic plan.
Is the, uh, graphic to scale to the, um, to the photograph?
I think she said it was.
It looks like the legs on the, in the photograph are proportionally higher than she's drawn it and makes you think that if they brought the fence down a, a little bit.
Right, I was gonna ask that, too.
If we could put the fence down just to cover the bottom a little bit.
This is, seems high.
Yeah.
And these legs seem disproportionate to these top, the tops. So if you could lower, if you could make it down like this.
We can do that. Yeah, I think once we actually get into it to cover, and then, so you won't see the legs of the.
Right.
But we still, just, right, we still want the airflow.
Right.
Yeah, airflow is important, yeah.
And then the total height of this is five, five, is that right?
Yes.
Is it, I just have a couple que, I just have a couple questions. Is the.
Sure.
Is it, um, the height enough to come up to the top of the mechanicals? Would, is, if you've adjusted it lower?
And then the window, too. I'm looking at the window.
Yeah, the window, we might be blocking the win, we are definitely blocking, blocking the basement window.
It's to the top of the electric box. It's like, is that fifty-one or sixty-one?
I think it's sixty-one.
Right.
Yeah, so it would cover through the wi, part of the window.
Is, is that, is that the, the lattice a stock size, uh, of?
We were, I, um, Ted said it was, but I don't know what the actual size.
It's wood, not plastic.
It's vinyl, to my knowledge. So the post would be, how they have this done right now is they have the wooden post, but then they put, um, a sleeve on it, um, some kind of vinyl sleeve, vinyl cap is what they're using right now. We were proposing to use wood.
You were proposing wood.
Yeah.
We prefer wood.
So can, can you increase the vertical height of the lattice without dropping the whole thing down? Right. In other words, grow the dimension of the lattice to.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. Yeah, I can find out, you know, I'm such a layperson. This is, this is way beyond me, but, um, I can find out if the lattice comes in larger pieces, too.
You may have some scrap, but it'll cover the bottom, but.
Yeah.
Uh, I had another question, is whether the proposed plantings, uh, would be just at the base of, of the lattice or would they also cover the front of the, the street side of the lattice?
We haven't got that far ahead because we haven't got a comprehensive plan of everything that we're going to do, um, and costs as well. What do you think? But we'd like to cover it as much as possible, but still have access to it so it can be maintained.
Will the access be from the rear or from the front?
It's.
Are they gonna access it this way or this way?
It, with the panels on both sides, you could be able to access. But not the, the actual.
Of the street side, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I think on the material, um, I think a wood-like or synthetic wood would be acceptable. I think the concern that we typically have is, um, a plastic material that, that's smooth and reads as plastic.
And it's shiny.
Even shiny. There, there's some synthetic wood-like materials that have graining in them, and.
Okay.
Asak is, is one, but, um, there's several, so.
Okay, I think you'd be unhappy with plastic, too, given the, given the efforts you've made so far. It's beautiful, that you wouldn't want to put. Right. I agree. So as I said, we are looking for an extension on this. I know, um, our, uh, COA expired in, um, September. I don't know what the, you know, I'd like to put it off till spring. I don't know if you need a specific date, um, as soon as we can get to it.
Um.
Do, do we need a final, and, and I guess, can we appro, uh, we talked about some potential adjustments to the drawing. Can we approve it or vote on it, uh, subject to those changes?
Yeah, yes, we should, we should, we should list the stipulations, um, just to make sure they're on the record that, what, what we've been talking about concerning height and plantings and material and look, and all, all of those should be listed as stipulations associated with the extension.
I, I, I'll make a motion that the, um, Children's Learning Center, um, mechanical relish be approved, uh, with, uh, uh, an extent, a time extension. What, what time period do we need?
I'm hoping, you know, we're thinking July first, we should be able to.
Six months.
Yeah, we, she has, I mean, yeah, so I'm, so we're, we're extending it, a current, currently approved. Or is this, this, if this is a new one, then she has a year, right?
Right.
Right, the.
This is not a new one, right?
She has whatever time we give her. It's typically a year, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, then we don't need to state an, an extension then. In other words, if we approve it, you have a year.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't need to state that. Um, with the. No.
I mean, I, I think it would be better to, to, uh, given, given neighbors' concerns, um, pin down that it would be done by July first or some, some reasonable, feasible date.
That reasonable for you?
Okay, so, and it's, uh, the, the project is completed by July first, um, with the following adjustments to the, um, design. The square lattice will be, uh, increased in dimension to cover, to come within, what do we say, six inches from the ground?
Four?
Four?
Yeah, it should be lower.
Four? Four, okay, four inches from the ground. The material will be a, um,
Wood or what?
Wood or wood-like material. And I think that's it.
It will cover the, the electrical.
It, the drawing shows that, so we haven't changed that. Uh, and, and access, maintenance access will be, I'm just gonna state it so we have it. Maintenance access will be on the south. Let's figure this right.
The western east, she said, I think.
No, not, no, not east, south and west. Yeah. Panels.
South, south and, wouldn't it be south and east? West side is the street side, right?
Oh, yes, excuse me, south and east. Thanks, John. Yeah, sorry.
And do you wanna say anything about the height of the plantings in front of it?
Um.
That's right, man.
I, I don't think it matters to me, John.
Okay.
Looks nice.
Because, I, I mean, I think it would be fine if it, if you wanna plant, that's fine, too, but it's not required, in my opinion.
Right, 'cause we'll have the screen.
I would think, definitely planting. I have an issue with it overlapping the window.
Yeah, I was concerned about that.
I think it's gonna look like a mistake.
I see.
Um, 'cause if you look at, it's gonna come across, it's going to, is that, I mean, is that a, a window that is operable? Do you ever open that? I mean, is this the intent to cover that window on the side there? It just doesn't make sense to me. I would think of covering.
Well, the length, I mean, we, it, it, the post could fall in line with the window frame. I mean, this, this drawing extends it well beyond the, the unit.
Right.
But there's no reason why the post, because it's open air, so it's not gonna affect the mechanical.
Right.
So.
So we're hoping to line them.
We, we could say, I could say in the statement that the, um, east boundary of the structure, um, I'm thinking about the best way to say it. East boundary does not extend um, or overlap, let's say overlap, um, the adjacent window.
And that the east, east side, does it have to be covered because it's not seen from the road?
Still have to have the post, though. So even if the east side were open to the post.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but it's visible from, I mean, there's a drive, well, that's, that's not a public.
But it's preferable to have it enclosed.
I think it is, too, yeah.
They can do it.
The, the drawing says it's, the sides are removable, but it doesn't say anything about the front being.
That's right. The front removable for maintenance.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah. So I think that stands.
I do, too.
Martha, did you get that?
So I'm so confused about this boundary. Wouldn't, I mean, this drawing shows it's not possible to have the lattice not overlap the window, even if you move the east boundary west? In other words, toward the mechanicals?
I'm talking about this window, not the, not the basement window.
Oh, trying to line it up like this.
Right.
Right.
Not overlap the, uh.
Right, so cutting it back.
The six over six, um.
I understand.
Window, yeah.
Yeah, but the basement window will.
This is not their prop.
I know. Um, so if you move this boundary here, you're still not going to clear this window completely, are you? Or am I not reading this correctly?
Right, 'cause I think she, Carolyn, from the edge of the building and the front and the, it says sixty inches to the back leg of the unit, but then she doesn't give the dimension to the end of the window.
Right.
It's gonna be close. It's gonna be close.
It'll be very close.
It's better than overlap, so.
Yeah, okay.
Did you guys ever think of covering the unit and then for the, um, electrical box,
just doing some sort of decorative spiral kind of planting or something? Rather than a six or five-foot piece of lattice?
We haven't got that far ahead now. It was just like, well, let's do something very similar to the Historic Society, just.
I like that.
We don't want any plants growing, clearly growing up the side of the building or anything like that.
It'll entangle the electrical.
Oh, yeah, we had enough issues with rod and everything.
Efforts of this that have not been successful.
No, but I think that's still a good point. The box would cover this much, and then you would plant something here that would be tall.
Right, we could do.
Not adjourning the house, not touching the house.
Right, we'd adjust some kind of.
It is a nice idea. We'd have to, um.
Means less of a structure.
Yeah, though.
'Cause we know less.
Right, 'cause that's a big.
Less massive a structure.
Right. I mean, I don't know what the, your earth is like at the base there or how close you can, you know, plant some things, or you're gonna have to ask your guys that.
Right, well, so landscapers. I know what you're saying, just to cover the, not make it as stark, gargantuan.
Right.
And then, um, seeing that some kind of covered for, but then they'd have to. And then um, seeing that some kind of covered for, but then they'd have to, I, it would be, do they have to get in there to read the meter? How would? Yeah, you wouldn't want it touching, but you could, ideally, you could find a plant that's columnar, as they say. It would go up, but would still leave access to the meter. I know, we didn't want any plantings close to the building. We had enough issues with that. Really? Well, I mean, I don't mean the past issues, I mean that.
I, I, I support your statement.
All right.
Yeah. I think it will be cleaner.
Your motion's made.
Good, seconded, but by Deanie.
Seconded by Deanie, thank you.
Martha, do you wanna read it back, so?
Uh, yes, yep. Okay, so Rust Todd moved, seconded by Deanie Mallory, that the C of A be extended to July first with the following adjustments to the design. Uh, the lattice will be adjusted to be four inches from the ground of wood or wood-like material, and maintenance access will be on the south and east sides. Um, the east boundary of the structure should not overlap the adjacent window.
I, I think the only, the two clarifications is um, that the, the, the dimension of the lattice will grow so that what we don't want is for the lattice to be dropped in elevation. We want to in, increase the size of the lattice.
You, you don't want the top, you don't want the top of the lattice to.
Extended, yeah.
Right, so the bottom, so let's say the bottom will be extended, yeah. Is the word. The bottom will be extended to a dimension that's four inches above the ground, yeah.
Great.
But you're ha- you're happy with the o- the other, with how high it is though, right?
Yeah, I think you have to, to cover the.
Yeah.
To cover the meter, yeah.
And are you saying anything about plantings or not? I got lost in that discussion.
I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like to see a photo of this, John?
I'm so, somehow in, in clearing up my voice, have lost my ability to see you all, so. I trust you all.
I, I can text it to you. I'm texting you the photo.
That's all right.
Okay.
I'm not voting anyway.
Okay.
Did, did, did you mention the material, Martha? The wood-like, wood or wood-like materials?
Yes, wood or wood-like.
Right, okay, thank you.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good. Wonderful, thank you all so much.
It's great.
Oh, I'm so thankful. But you were so careful about the design. Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much. And if you, if anybody wants to see the inside, give me a call, we can arrange it. It's beautiful.
I really like to see it, after having come in when it was a disaster. Are they fully open?
Yes, we opened October first.
That's great.
Great. How many uh, students do you have?
Um, well, each program is a little different, so we have um, in infants, we have, we can do up to nine, right now we just have four. And then um, we have a transition program, uh, fourteen. And then we have our toddlers program, which is in the back, that's sixteen. And then we still do the before and after school, and we have about fifty-five kids in that.
Right. Very good.
So the state did give us, um, they said we could have more infants, we could have more transition. Um, but you know, we have to buy more cribs, we have to get more staff, we have, you know, so we're slowly.
Yeah.
Slowly doing it, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Yay, have a good day now. All right. Um, the like-for-like form revisions, John?
Yeah, um, I haven't done more work on the language and Carolyn, I believe, had agreed to help with the language because in a communication with Julie, um, she suggested that the language could be used with the uh, revision. She's working on to the website description of our procedures. And I, I think the best thing is, is just to save the, any form revisions uh, until we pin down the language for the website uh, procedure description. So, if we can, if we can, today, under new business or all continuing business, perhaps we can just take a minute and make sure we're all in agreement on, on uh, the next steps and the vision we have of, 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 of what we want and then for the March meeting, we can work on the, try to pin down the precise language.
Okay. Good, and I, my understanding, John, is that I will do, uh, I will edit those, that, uh, that information just for clarity before the March, for presentation at the March meeting.
Yes.
So, is that right? That's what you're asking, I think. I just wanna be clear.
Is, is, is Julie there?
No.
Online?
Hi, I am here.
She's online.
Oh, sorry, Julie. Hi.
No, it's okay, I've been muted, so.
I mean, Julie, does that make sense, sense to you? That, that uh, we try to come up with the, I get, I guess one, well, we can talk about it now. I mean, I guess one question was what whether the form alone would suffice as a description of the procedure, or whether uh, w- we should in addition to the forums, have uh, perhaps a, you know, frequently asked questions or some uh, other bit of information that breaks down the information on the forums and perhaps also goes into a bit more detail on, on some topics such as the uh, uh, for example, the approval and advance procedure that is on the agenda next.
Right, yes, um, yes, cause when I had seen your form proposal revisions, I had not actually looked at the forums when I did, um, the suggested um, website changes, I just kinda tried to streamline and clarify all the wonderful information um, that is on the website and a few locations and tried to streamline that. But then I saw your forms and they seem so comprehensive, I just didn't know. I just wanna make sure that we're consistent across everything that we do. Um, that seems kind of important and um, uh, and that we're just clear, um, and that the website is easy to navigate. So whatever everybody thinks is the best process for that, um, I think we can move forward on. And the idea of just using the form seems super clean to me, but I, I do see merits in having additional information as well. That makes sense.
Yeah, I guess my concern with just the form is that um, you know, the, then the information is mixed in with other things and I, I'm, I'm, I just wonder whether it would be sufficient emphasis, that's one point. And, you know, it with a, with a FAQ format, you could just break it down into components, who, who has to apply, who has to, you know, what information do I need to provide, et cetera. Now, that's all on the form, but it, there also, again, may be some issues such as the approval and advance procedure where we, we, it's just too much to include that on the, on the form. So, some, some bits of supplemental information about that procedure um, could be useful on the website.
I like the idea. I like having the idea of having the forums plus a, a Q and A, if everybody else does.
I think simplicity is the key. Keep it as clear and concise and simple as possible, so. You know, getting people access to the form as directly as they can is, would be my thought.
Great, yes. Agreed.
The uh, the guidelines list a, a number of important uh, projects that require the like-for-like that are not listed on the applications, it, it's just other, um, that we think.
Where are you looking at, on that like-for-like? Oh, down at the bottom.
Well, in the middle, it says other.
Yep.
But on the information page, it lists things like uh, handicap lamps and TV ditches and swimming pools that aren't indicated on the application. But they fall under other.
Other, yeah.
So is that not adequate?
What would be an alternative? Perhaps list.
List more of them.
You know, just list the, instead of other, and in perhaps a different page, you would list these. Yeah, I, I, I take your point, I just, we want it to be simple, so.
Then there's gonna be something that we haven't listed.
Right, other is adequate, right.
So, would other be adequate? And if they ask what it is, it's all these other things. Yeah, I think if you, maybe you reference, if there is a separate list, and it's a list, um, it, it, it including but not um, comprehensive. In other words, something that says that there may be other things out there that are on this.
Or at, right next to other, you could say, uh, please reference the guidelines for like-for-like exceptions.
More detail.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And just have it very clearly printed there, so they can easily reference it.
Just say C and then guidelines.
Yeah. Deanie, are the ones that are listed on the form, are those the most common? Right, they seem to be the most common. And we haven't had anybody come in with a replacement of a swimming pool or, but yet you do.
These here are the most common, and then you have, people could start putting in, you know, pickleball courts or something, I mean, so.
No replacing.
Replace tennis court.
My grass court's not gonna be a asphalt, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
But the point.
What do you, what do you think about that? Um, Julie, John?
Well, I think.
Reasonable to me.
You, you know, that's an example of, if you start adding every detail on the form itself, it gets a bit too cramped, so I kinda like uh, the, the solution of, of uh, perhaps on the forum, if there's a generic term, other, just in parents, say, for example, see.
Well, reference the like-for-like exceptions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Easy.
Good, all right.
So Julie and, and uh, I'm happy to look at drafts and Carolyn will look at, at drafts before the the March meeting.
Okay, yes, perfect.
Sound good. Okay.
Do I have the, do I have the latest version? Uh, maybe Julie or John, if you would send it to me, just to be sure, I'm working on the right draft. Uh, and I will, I'll try to get that to you fairly quickly.
Okay. It's perfect, I will send that over.
Ready for Realtor signs?
Sure. Um, I've apologized for the late time. I sent these, I hope, it's, it's, it's fairly short, but everybody got the attachment that I sent last night. So. The question is just how to, how to proceed, now that a Realtor has said, um, what exactly is involved, or has asked, um. One question that I've highlighted is, is uh, whether we should vary our signage guidelines that say it's the property owner that has to apply, uh, that seems uh, cumbersome for property owners trying to sell their house and it, it may make sense to just allow a Realtor to uh, to, to apply. That's the first item I s- had under questions about changes.
Hey, John, one question I have is, is approval in advance? Um, would it only be a Realtor? I mean, for example, a contractor? Um, or an institution that has, I think you had a comment about the, like, the church, for example. Is there an institution that has a re- repetitive sign that they would approve in advance?
No, I think it.
Or is it just Realtor?
I think it would be, I think it would be um, all of the above. The question came up because if it's an institution, the church or the museum, or lack for whoever, uh, they would be the property owners who would be applying for this approval and advance procedure. So, the question is to, how do we modify our, our guidelines uh, to account for real estate signs? And as I noted on my form, w- we may, might well want to include the language we used was building contractor signs and signs of similar professionals. I don't, I don't know that contractors regularly would contemplate doing business on Lime Street, so we might not get I, I wouldn't even know who to, who all the contractors were to inform about this, this procedure. But we, we certainly could put them in. It, it seems to me to be a similar case as, as the one involving a property owner and a Realtor. It's a bit cumbersome and, and probably unnecessary for the, the property owner to, to seek approval.
But so the first issue is who is required to do it, and I, I would vote that we put the burden on the uh, the Realtor. Who is by definition an agent of the owner representing, and uh.
Right, but how are you going to, how are you going to contact that Realtor after the sign is up? Kind of like the horse is out of the gate already, so you're gonna ask them at that point. And the same thing with a contractor, the contractor's sign's gonna be up, you know, bef- a- a- and then i- unless it all goes back to the property owner. I don't know how you would um, control it unless you say to property owners, you're selling your house, if you're gonna have Stonemason come, you need to get you know, a C of A or whatever kind of form. It, I don't see how you would ever put it on, uh, uh, on a Realtor or Stonemason to do this.
Well, what, I think what's being suggested is can we use a blanket approval? In other words, notify at some point if we decide to do this, Caldwell Banker and all, all the various Realtors.
But it could be a Realtor from.
Well, it could be. I mean, there could be one we know from Boston or something.
Exactly, there are other, there's other Realtors.
But most of them are, are people that we're familiar with, mo- mostly.
Right.
So, isn't, isn't that the idea, John? We're considering whether to allow them blanket approval.
In other, in other words, of, of.
Which I support.
Yeah, uh, you know, some Realtor from far away is not gonna know about this, and that, and then you have a single case scenario, but uh, we, we have a few Realtors who commonly work in Old Lime and, and one of them contacted us after we sent out the letter about the signage guidelines, asking a few follow-up questions. And that, that prompted the consideration of, of this issue. It, it would make sense to me personally that Caldwell Banker say, um, applies now, you have one easy procedure, uh, they get approval for ten years or whatever. And they, they know the guidelines and, and. And they they know the guidelines and 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 uh. Uh, they're they're set to go if they get a contract.
And then in the case of an individual Realtor. That hasn't gotten the preapproval, they would still have to apply for a C of A. It's just you're allowing. You're, well, whoever wants to. Uh, somebody that's doing multiple. Business engagements on Lime Street could. Have a one-time approval process. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't negate the out some, the the in- the individual Realtor that's. Not routinely, they would still need a C of A.
Oh, sure, I mean, they're, they're not, anybody installing a sign is.
Right.
Technically needs procedures, are are you going to run into cases where somebody puts up a sign anyway? Sure, I mean, but.
Is there a way to have it pre-approved, but? The owner of the property is still responsible, in other words. I I I hear the concern about. The 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 responsibility actually being the owner of the property, i- it's like with renters or anything else, it's it's and. And also, uh. There might be a dispute between an owner and a Realtor at some point, and. The owner of the property is responsible for what goes on on their property. So maybe there's a pre-approved sign that. That makes it easy for a property owner to. You know, as part of dealing with their Realtor, they can say, we have these pre-approved signs. Put it up, but we don't take away the responsibility. Uh, of the owner for the signage on their.
What about another signature line? On the COFA that's specifically for Realtors, we could have another signature line.
For the owner, owner of the property, yeah.
This is, this is a question that I raised at the top of page two, should we involve the property owner in any procedure? Concerning real estate or building contractor signs, the difficulty is if you're getting approval in advance. You're not gonna sign up every homeowner on Lime Street. So, the the question is whether. If the Realtor gets approval in in advance, do we want the property owner to send in some okay? Uh, Danny and I talked about this briefly and our thought was that the. The situations in which a Realtor would put up a sign. That the property owner didn't want or are vanishingly rare. Um, and it may be just too much detail, but. Uh, whatever you all decide is 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 fine.
I just get concerned of the overall, the 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 idea of. Pushing the overall responsibility off of the property owner. For it, for it, for everything.
So maybe, I don't know, do we provide some kind of form that the? The Realtor can easily download and hand to their client. By the way, you're in harsh dark district, would you just sign this?
Yeah.
Put the, put, put the onus on the Realtor.
Really.
Have that be. Part of what we send to them.
Right.
Saying.
And and the sign is the the design of the sign.
Make it really simple.
It is already pre- pre-approved, but.
Just.
But the owner has to um.
Something very straightforward.
I don't know if others feel that way, I, did, did you feel that way?
I'm a little concerned just being that. I feel like the Realtors would not care about this. Um, but although we did have, and I think the reason why we're talking about this is we did have a circumstance. Where sign was up for a very long time after the property closed, so we know that it has happened. Majority of them, I feel like whatever company that they outsource, they come and they take the signs in a timely fashion. But to say that you're gonna add another piece to the, you know, there's a million Realtors in this town. That I really don't think that they're going to care, I really think that it would be. The property owner just to let them know to the agent somehow that. When we close, like, the sign's gonna come down, and I think for the most part, it really does, I think we just had. One case where it was a, a sign that was almost like a um, an old-fashioned sign that was a steak sign. That was up way after the property closed.
Do we charge money for a C of A? For the permit to put a Realtor sign? C of A we do.
All C of As, I know, we don't get a C of A for Realtors. At present, we don't.
Well, I was just thinking that could be a carrot too, that. Okay, you gotta pay for a C of A and you get your money back if you. Remove your. If you remove your sign in a timely fashion.
But is the goal to get the sign up and down in a timely fashion? Or is it to control what is up on the properties?
I think, I think part of, I think part of what we want is to um. And and the, I go on to list um. In under the heading one, some some of the issues to make sure that the Realtors are aware of. Of the limitations, there are Realtor signs that have pictures of the Realtor on them.
Yes, yes.
We haven't had problem with that, but we wanna be clear that. Uh, they understand that they can't. Put up signs that have pictures, we have limitations on the size of the sign. We have limitations on the duration of the sign. That can be a sticky one because right now we say we don't, we don't approve any temporary signs that extend more than thirty-five days.
And if we discussed.
Lot the houses don't, don't, don't find a buyer in five days.
John, have we discussed, and I, maybe we did back in when we started on all of this. You know, certain associations that require a, a small broker sign that just has a telephone number on it. You know, they do that in Long Island and the Hamlets all the time, I know in Grand Long Point, there's never a big Realtor sign, it is a small. Sign four foot off the ground or something like that, with just broker and the phone number, I mean, that's going a whole nother level, of course.
I mean.
Well, we have to.
Reintroducing a whole new.
Decide what we're comfortable with.
Right, right.
This hearing would be the place to commute, com- communicate that.
I think we make a lot of people unhappy.
The 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 benefit of it that I see is that you you do get some uniformity. In other words, once a a Realtor signed off, they're gonna make. You're gonna have a consistency of signage that you may not have as much now, like pictures and you might have. And the 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 design of the sign.
Right, well, but we ha- we we ha- we have the the arm imposed to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but it it, by doing a preapproval, um, there'll be. You'll see a more consistent installation of signs, of a design. Which I think is advantageous, I think that's a good thing.
That's one of the things we thought would be beneficial of this, when we sent these letters to these uh, to these uh, businesses. It would remind them of our guidelines and what we expect the signs to look like, you know, so.
Russ, um, I agree with you about the value of consistency. But would this necessarily, the preapproval process, would it necessarily provide consistency, in other words? The Realtor, once that Realtor has preapproval, is the content of the sign, um, I can't, I I.
Yeah, the actual content could change, but the design. The, yeah, the the design, the aesthetic would be in keeping with the district, right? But just like any other sign, the content could change. Within whatever constraints we apply, so.
So the the question we're real, a real question we're really asking here is whether we agree on a preapproval process? Do you agree with that, John?
Yes.
Well, I I agree with that, I think we, I haven't heard a conclusion about. How or whether the property owner should be involved if the Realtor or building contractor is applying. And I haven't heard a agreement, we don't have to have agreement on today. On on the following point, I haven't heard agreement on on. What we want the signs to look like.
And 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 also, I think the other, the other thing to throw in there would be kind of a standard. Location or placement. Right, that, because normally we we would say design and placement of the sign, number of signs. Right, so I think part of it would be to standardize the placement of the sign is is. Might be, and I don't know how we would say that, but so many feet from the road, or you know, I I don't know what the answer is on that, but seems like that would be something. To conclude.
So shall we table this now? And move on and take it up again once we've had a chance to think about it, perhaps?
Yeah, I I would, I would like, I would like, that's fine, but I would like to pin this down soon because we've had a. An outstanding letter that needs a response now for several, several months.
And and spring will be the big sell time, so.
And signs, I feel like, don't stay up long, right, what did that, these.
Well, they have it now because houses have been selling, but remember, not too long ago, they weren't selling.
Well, just what do we do if a sign gets up and, you know, unbeknownst to us? I'm going back to the issue of how we notify people of. Uh, the need to get a C of A. And uh. A- again, is it the, is the onus on the homeowner or the Realtor? Um, and I'm just throwing it out there, what what is the process now, I mean, do we send a letter to everybody and just say? Every homeowner, that is. Uh, if we were to put the burden on them and say, if and when you sell your house, you're gonna have to. Tell your Realtor that he needs this, he or she needs a C of A, is that?
My, my reaction, David, is if we tell them now that they'll, they'll forget about it.
Yeah, I would.
Um, I I think uh, the letter now should go to to Realtors. Uh, I think we should have something up in our Q of A on the website about procedures. Um, and I think what happens in in any case in which a. An unapproved sign goes up is we, we have started to contact the. The the landowner and uh, in- inform them that they 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 need a C of A. Um, the. Uh, if a Realtor sign goes up from some. Uh, unknown real estate company, I guess I would say contact the Realtor and the property owner. And say, one of you needs to to come in and get this approved.
Right. It's almost like, John, if we had, and I'm just hypothetically, if we had a batch of signs. That had a stamp on it that said approved by the historic district commission. Those, if tho- if that sign goes up, it's been pre-approved, then. Then the property owner, it's okay, if another sign goes up, it's not, that needs a C of A. But it's, it's, it's that the property. Um, owner doesn't have to go through the process. If they're working with a Realtor that has a preapproved sign, but they're still responsible for what goes up on their property.
And one, one of the questions I had is how we. How we communicate all of this. We certainly could put up on the website or even in in Martha's list of. Situations that we're monitoring, a statement about. You know, the following organizations have received preapproval. For putting up signs about temporary events, the following Realtors have have received preapproval for putting up their real estate signs. And. You know.
Yeah.
That could, that could, that could over some period of time. Perhaps prompt other organizations and Realtors to come in. Do, do we want to dispense with the thir- a thirty-five day limit? For Realtor signs or contractor signs?
Well, I think we have to dispense with it because we can't.
Right.
Determine how long it's gonna take to sell a house.
Right. But I think we should have a limitation after. Final closing for real estate signs and after certificate of occupancy for. On contractor. I agree, yeah. I think two weeks is more than adequate after closing. And if you do that, you get your twenty dollars back. No.
And you stay on the list.
Another question just to think about is, which I spell out is.
But who's gonna?
I I guess Realtor signs and and contractor signs are all stuck in the ground, so we don't have to worry about it, but. For other types of temporary signs, such as the the musical masterwork sign that we all seem to like. That is neither a sandwich board nor a wire sign, wire stake sign. It's not a structure, because it's not stuck in the ground. All the statute says is that if you have a structure, you have to get a C of A. If you have a, an advertising sign. Uh, that advertises an event or an idea or whatever, um. And it's not a structure, it just says that the HTC has control over it. So we could theoretically devise a less formal. Process without a C of A ad- legal advertisement and and informal, formal hearing. Um, in cases such as the, the musical masterworks sign. That.
That's a lot to unpack.
I don't think we need to worry about it with respect to Realtors or, or um.
Right.
Building contractors.
Right, I think that's, that's a different subject, it seems to me that we're talking about professionals that are. They're doing con- services for a property owner in the district that want to advertise their. Service, yeah. For that.
The other source of aggravation that I anticipate is that. If my memory serves. Contractor signs, roofer signs, uh, are typically wire stake signs. That's what they have, so. We we may get some pushback on on that. Okay, so why don't we save it, I will. Uh, you can all think about it. Um, what I'm taking away is that we want language that applies to Realtors and building contractors that we. Uh. Maybe make explicit that either the property owner or the Realtor may apply for. Uh, 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 or contractor may apply for a sign. And uh.
I just.
That, that, you know, except in, that for the the time limit. Of thirty-five days, we say, except in the case of of uh. Realtor signs or contractor signs.
Okay.
Okay.
Every, everybody else can, can, can pass along ideas and we'll try to pin it down next meeting.
Okay.
John, just one question, under Roman numeral one, first bullet point, it says the property owner rather than a tenant. Must submit a C of A, that's a miss, a typo. Right?
What's a typo?
Calling it a tenant?
The property owner rather than a tenant must submit a C of A application.
But we're talking about Realtor signs.
Well, that, that's the existing provision, and then heading two suggests proposed revisions. To to the signage guidelines to accommodate Realtors. So, the first item under heading two says, we would modify that current language.
Okay, I thought we meant to the property owner rather than the Realtor slash contractor must submit a C of A.
No, no, this is just generally the property owner has to submit and then add. And then add a provided, however, that. When approval is sought for real estate signs, building contractor signs and signs of similar professionals.
Okay. That's for like some of the businesses that, that are in renting a building.
I was confused if, if I had a tenant who tried to sell my house, I'd be.
Well, we, I mean, we have had situations where tenants in, in like the. Next to Dini's uh, home, try to put out signs and I don't think Jim Graybill knows about it.
That hasn't been a problem for a long time, but it was. You know, I think maybe Jim Graybill has. Asked them, don't know. But it hasn't been a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have, we don't have, sorry, we don't have to have the sign rather than a tenant, maybe it's, it's confusing. If we just say the property owner must submit us an application.
Yeah, I think you just say that.
That should be clear enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. New and ongoing business, we're, we're, we're sort of a little bit late, um, so. Shall we, um, do you have something to say, David, about the Florence Griswold Museum Boundary or have we?
Okay, I, last meeting I did go in and I found three maps like. Which show the meets and bounds of the properties. Around, you know, in the area that we were talking about. And the, so I don't know if that's enough for the surveyors. That were with G I S, but anyway, I'm gonna hand over to Russ. More stuff. Which, if they need it, I think, uh. At the first, I might have even sent this out, um, these are all the properties that, uh, of the. The book and page number. If they, if they need to go look at the meets and bounds description.
So, just so. We're all clear. I understand that the task is that the uh. The boundary that was established when the district. Um, was established in nineteen seventy-one. Had the Florence Griswold. Museum, which, which is now the entire Florence Griswold Museum property subdivided. Um, into different properties and the delineation. Do- does not include. Um, the, the full three hundred feet from the, um. Hall's Road. Because some of these properties were not actually.
Three hundred feet deep.
Well, not only three hundred feet, but didn't actually have access, because the way it was divided, didn't have access on Hall's Road.
Uh, didn't have access on Lime Street.
I mean Lime Street, I'm sorry, Lime Street. Um, so, so what we're going to do is. Draw the boundary per the nineteen seventy-one map. Using the specific, um. Metrics that are, that are outlined in the documents that we have right here. Is that, is that your understanding, John? Just to.
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct. That's one of the things that the, the. Uh, the council, when we submitted questions about the confusing boundary description, uh. Emphasize, we're, we're stuck with, with the, the boundaries that were established in nineteen seventy. So the fact that the Florence Griswold now owns all of the property does not mean that. All of that property gets added to the historic district.
Correct. Yep, that's, so that's what I'll do is I'm gonna take this information, try to. Make the, the, the clear definition of the, what the boundary is and communicate that to the G I S folks. And we'll, uh, hopefully get it posted.
I think we have, there are basically three, that's an easement, and this one. We didn't know, and then this.
Right.
One there, so we're.
Should be.
Easement here, right?
Were you saying that all the property gets included in the district or only up to the boundary that was previously stated in seventy-one?
The latter. Right, see, right now it's drawn. To three hundred feet from Lime Street, but that's not correct because it. Because the nineteen seventy boundary. Accounted for the fact that it wasn't one large property, it was actually some type of property.
It should go on to the back of this property.
Three hundred feet, yeah.
Uh, well, this one could, or will this.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Back of that one, to the back of this one.
Right.
And then up like that, I guess.
Russ, so in practice. Does more of the Florence Griswold, current, current Griswold Museum property get included in the historic district? Or less?
It'll be, it'll be less than what's shown now on the G I S.
Be less than if it were three hundred foot consistent.
I think so.
Well, then my question then is, so here is the Lime Art Society, or whatever they're called. So it only goes to there?
Right. That's what I'm saying, this, this doesn't get included. Because, because these properties aren't.
That's fronts.
Right.
So that one would go to right here.
To here, that's right.
And then this one would go.
Right. To three hundred feet.
A newbie question, I don't really know the answer to this. Why does the three hundred foot boundary not supersede? The prior designation?
John, do you want to answer that question?
Because the description of the, the historic district in nineteen seventy. Um, said it goes back three hundred feet, except in the case of. Uh, sh- short lots.
Right.
And, and it, and A, and B, the historic district does not apply. To lots that do not border Lime Street.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a front to back dimension that you're talking about.
The three hundred feet?
Yeah.
It's from the center of Lime Street.
To the rear boundary.
Rear boundary, yeah.
Well, all, all of this could have been avoided if we, if the historic district had been. Established a few years later because the state statute now requires that you have meets and bounds for the historic district. Uh, would have been quite a surveying project, but we wouldn't have had these debates. Uh, over the exact location. Um, Martha, and then just Martha, once this is done, my, my hope is that we can have. Links both to the map that you're adding now and a link to the, the G I S map.
Yeah, I think the, I think the nineteen seventy map. In other words, what we actually have on file as the reference map doesn't change. That's what was drawn.
Well.
It's just, it, it's not clear what, it's not, it doesn't have enough precision. To have the line drawn on the G I S.
But it's also, it also does change. Russ, because another point that was clarified by council is. That nineteen seventy map was inconsistent in its treatment of so-called wraparound lots. And, and so we've clarified that.
Right.
It does wrap around, is my recollection in all.
It does. Yeah, right, okay. Great. Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Good. The next thing on, uh, that we wanted to discuss under new and ongoing business is Hall's Road. And I, I know that all of, everyone is familiar with what's going on there. And the question sort of before us now is whether, whether we should provide public comment. And if so, what the content of that should be, what approach we should take. I know that John has some questions about our statutory authority. Um, which, uh, we, 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 we respect and acknowledge. I found something, John, in the P O C D, which, um, I think gives us an opening. Really almost an invitation to comment. Um, would you be interested in my reading it?
Sure.
Okay. Um, this is on, uh, under economic development, page twenty-three of the current P O C D.
That's an acronym for what?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, which is a legal document that we're required by the state to update every ten years. So this is twenty-one, yes, our most recent one. New and commercial development should incorporate size characteristics and landscaping that reflects the historic small town character of Old Line. Building and site design should be compatible with the historic image of Old Line. In building size and architecture, signage, lighting, parking, landscaping. Standards should recognize the distinctive character of individual commercial areas. Land use agencies should work voluntarily with developers to convey the town's aesthetic architectural preferences. And then under action, and this is where I think we have some standing. Under action, it says Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic District Commission, and Economic Development. Uh, Commission. So I think. Uh, my interpretation of this is that they're inviting us to comment on projects such as these. I don't know how you. The rest of you feel about that.
I guess my comment would be. Two, my comment would be twofold. Um, first, Planning Commission signed off on this, so they don't see it. Hall's Road is a, as, as, as a, in- inconsistent with the P O C D. My second is it, it, though, it could provide an opening. I forget, I don't have in front of me, Dini, the e- e- email that I sent you with the. The statutory language, but some of our statutory in, uh, language. Refers, gives us authority to share, share information, is that, is that correct? I can. Look it up.
I don't have the email in front of me either. So the question really before us, I, my, uh, own sense of things is that. That there are many people in the town that probably are looking for us to say something. That this seems to be one of the biggest questions before the town in a long time. And, um. That's just my sense. I don't know how the rest of you. What your sense of it is, but.
Well, I guess the question is, so I, I attended the last zoning meeting. And, uh, where the, the H R O D was submitted by the H D. I C. And I attended primarily for the purpose of. Understanding the boundary of the district, because as we discussed, I think there had been different maps. So the, um. It was made clear in the presentation that the boundary is to C thirty S. District, which does not actually, uh, overlap. The, uh. Historic district. As part of that meeting, as it proceeded. I, I listened to the members of the zoning commission. Um, question about. The increase in size and density. And structures that were not in prior submissions. One being increasing the allowable size of a frontage property from, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five feet to two hundred feet. Allowing for forty units per acre. Um, one of the, one of the members took the big Y property as an example, which is twelve point three five acres. And I wrote these numbers down because it, it caught my attention, that. There was, you could build on forty percent of that property, which would then create a structure. That had a footprint of two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. And a three stories tall, up to thirty-five feet high, six hundred and forty-five thousand square feet. Um, and the example given by the attorney would be like fifty condos. Um, on that twelve point three acres, which is four units per acre. Um, but the ordinance as proposed allows for forty units per acre. So you could multiply that by ten as the possible number of units. And I, I noted all that because I think it goes to our question in that. If we're to make a comment, it's outside of our district, right? But I think the, the comment or question would relate to. How does the scale and density of what's being proposed? Impact the historic character of the historic district? And so to me. It's questions like, uh, traffic, it's questions about, um. Uh, lighting from, from large-scale buildings that could be built, um. That's where I think we might have, might have comment.
If, if I can briefly summarize our statutory authority with respect to. Uh, matters outside the, the, the district and some of this. Also applies. Inside the district, our authority with respect to matters other than approving C of As. We can, this is, for anyone curious, and I can send it to you. Section seven dash one four seven C, parents J. Um, any historic district commission may, unless prohibited by. Ordinance or special act. Uh, I'll just read this, the relevant, possibly relevant provisions. Provide information to property owners and others involving the preservation of the district. So if things outside the district significantly affect the district, then. Uh, that could relate to preservation of the district. Uh, the historic district commission may initiate planning and zoning proposals, which suggests we can. Phrase whatever we want to say as a proposal to zoning. We may cooperate with other. Agencies and organizations and groups interested in historic preservation. And then we may. Render advice on sidewalk construction and repair. And some advice on some other things that are not apparently relevant, such as alteration of public buildings. That are. Not otherwise under our control, but that affect historic districts. And. I think that's, I think that's it.
Wh- which subsection was that? That's.
It's in, in chapter ninety-seven A. Section seven dash one four seven C. Parents. Parents J, closed parents.
Okay.
So I, I, my, my sense that, like, in this email I sent, uh, Dini is that. We, we can find a, a hook, a way to, to make comments, but that. In the phrasing of them, I, I think it would be advisable to try to. Track what we're actually authorized to do.
Right.
Well, the meeting, the next zoning commission meeting is February.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Seven o'clock.
Do we want to, so, because after that, anything's moved, right? Unless they deny it.
Unless they deny it, I guess. So do we want to put together a letter?
Well, this is what.
We all have to, because.
This is what we're discussing. Should we do?
Well, I know, but we, yes.
Oh, you mean, are you suggesting we do individual ones?
No.
No, okay.
No, I'm just saying, I guess you were, it was like, we gotta do it before February twenty-eighth.
Your point is that it, it should be, if we're gonna do it, it has to be done before our next meeting.
Yes. Before the twenty-seventh.
It has to be done.
That's what I'm saying. It's like, right.
So it could be circulated by email, or we could, we could have a special meeting to discuss.
Are we allowed to just circulate by email? Probably not.
No, I think we'd, I think we'd have to have a special meeting, because we can't, we can circulate things, we just can't talk about it by email.
Right.
And what would be the deadline? What would be the date, ideal date at which the letter would be submitted?
I, I would, for a few days, for the twenty-seventh. Because they're going to be getting a lot of public comment, so we would want to be sure that ours is not lost. And I think it would also, if we decide to do this, would be beneficial to have one of us stand up and make the public comment publicly in the meeting. I'm not going to be here, John isn't going to be here, so.
Well, we have the person of the year.
We do.
The sixth is a Thursday. So would we, it should probably go in before Monday, the twenty-fourth. It should probably go in, be submitted by Friday, the twenty-first, would you think? I'm just, because it helps to have a framework for what we're going to be, be offering. Would you think Friday, the twenty-first, John? For the letter to, the comment to be submitted to zoning?
To me, yeah. That seems sensible.
So we should have our meeting, I would need a day or two, if I'm going to be writing this, to incorporate comments from the special meeting. So I would suggest the special meeting no later than the nineteenth of February. I, I don't have my calendar, but.
I do. Or a calendar, let's see.
So the seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth that week for a special meeting, perhaps?
How does that look for everyone that week? Seventeenth, the week of the seventeenth? Seventeenth is President's Day, that may, I don't know, that that has any bearing on anybody's life.
Would this be a nine, at nine AM meeting?
Perhaps eighteenth?
Well, we could.
Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Maybe Tuesday, the eighteenth, would that work?
Could anyone do an afternoon meeting that would make it easier for John?
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking a morning would be, would be better, because we have, we have guests that, actually, I mean, I'm free on the nineteenth. But the seventeenth or eighteenth, it would be preferable to have it at nine. My.
My calendar's in the car, I can get it.
I have to do morning.
The nineteenth, the nineteenth, anytime would be good for me.
Then let's make it morning, so it gives more time for incorporation of down the nineteenth, instead of the nineteenth.
It's morning, either day.
Either day.
And I would suggest la- later morning for John, so not.
No, 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 or I, we have guests, so I.
Oh, you would rather get up? You, so you'd like to do like a nine o'clock here, John? Six o'clock your time?
Also, the seventeenth is President's Day, so I don't think the town hall will be open.
So, okay, eighteenth or nineteenth, is there a preference? Let's see, Carolyn's going to get her.
Nineteenth, I actually have a meeting appointment ahead. Should be over by eight, it's in Waterford, so it doesn't matter, I guess.
I mean, my, my personal, my personal preference, my personal preference would be late in the day on the nineteenth, or later in the day, because the guests are leaving about six AM on the nineteenth.
So.
Or seven AM.
So ten, I mean, ten, ten or?
Yeah, ten o'clock's fine.
On the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Or either day's fine. And can we stipulate now, meeting not to exceed twenty minutes?
Good luck. Good luck with that, Dave.
Okay, is that okay for you?
I think, yeah. Yeah, eighteen, nineteen, and I think we could get in here.
You looked at the calendar, yeah. We're sort of looking at nineteenth. That's the nineteenth.
I have a museum meeting at ten. You do too, John. On the nineteenth.
So the eighteen, so that won't work.
Eighteenth is good for me.
Eighteenth works, morning.
Okay. Eighteenth, John, at, at nine, your time? I mean.
If it's on the night, eighteenth, I need to get up early and do it at nine AM your time. Because we have, we have guests who will be stirring by, by eight my time.
So are we on the eighteenth, at nine o'clock from the eighteenth, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey. Okay. Good. So some of the, some of the issues that have been raised, just briefly, just you, Russ, raised, with the traffic, the light bleed. There's some, some, some question about the described amenities that are going to be added to Hall's Road that could possibly then become something that someone thinks should be added to Lime Street. That would be a concern for us. I don't know whether the impact of faux design, faux historic designs has any resonance with any of us, but that's another consideration, something to think about. Does it devalue the historic character of the Stark District? If these buildings are recreated, sort of just the, the entrances of them and attached onto large buildings, how do we, how do we think about that in terms of ourselves? And then, and there was one point where, one point in the H R O D where the H R I C stated that they had the Stark District support. And I think that was misrepresented. Yeah, so these are just some things to.
I don't think that's the exact statement, but I think we need to be very careful and make sure that.
It says positive reaction, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's different than support, so.
Positive reaction.
Reaction.
Very tricky.
In my, in my memory. But that's absolutely incorrect.
Yes.
We've identified the issues.
I just want to make sure that we.
That are of a concern to you and us, by, by the end of the, your position, whatever. Maybe you could draft a letter before the meeting, because I could see this going all long, long.
We'll get something before, don't we? Before the meeting.
One, one point.
We'd go on all day.
One, one point that I think's overarching is, and I, I, I don't know the answer, if it's a problem or not, but the idea that the old line is a historic rule is still considered, if you look at the census, where we are not rural, we are, we're rural and not urban. So the question perhaps is, what does it mean for the historic district to have, which is a rural residential area, to have a urban suburban type development directly adjacent?
What's the difference of feet, I always said? Can you say the H D C to Lime Street or to Hall's Road is a hundred feet difference, fifty feet?
What, what do you mean?
Where does Hall's Road and this overlay start, and where does the H D C end?
It's directly adjacent. It, in other words, the C thirty S.
Doesn't overlap, I don't think.
It doesn't overlap, but it's directly adjacent.
Perfect.
Right behind the, right where we were talking about right here.
How does, how is that different from places like Wethersfield, where their historic district is quite large? And it's literally surrounded by urban.
Well, again, I, I, I think that's the question in my mind, is, is, and we should look at examples. And, you know, what is appropriate, what's not appropriate? And it's something I think we should consider. And Wethersfield might be a perfect, an example we should look at, I don't know.
Do you want to say anything about si- sidewalks? And perhaps signs that are associated with sidewalks? I mean, just because that's one of the issues in which the statute specifically gives the H D C authority to comment.
Let's, if you don't mind us for a moment, could we take one step back? How much of this letter should be devoted to justifying our right to comment? And how much of the letter should be taken up with the specific comments that we would like to make? And then the third question to consider later, but to consider is, what do we want the conclusion of the letter to be? In other words, are we going to make a recommendation? Are we going to make a suggestion? Are we simply going to raise questions? So what, what do we want the conclusion to be? So those are my three questions. But first, John, you keep returning to the statutory authority. How much of this letter and how much of the purpose of this comment at this particular moment in our town's history needs to be devoted to our statutory authority?
I, I would do it succinctly. I might do it towards the end, rather than the beginning. I, I, I would like there to be some acknowledgement or, or statement on the record that, that, that says we're not just throwing in our comments, that we actually have authority to make these comments.
I, in, in my view, the people who pay attention to the letter are not going to be concerned with whether we're, we have statutory authority, they're going to be concerned with what we say. So in my view, it's much more important for us to refine what it is that we really want to comment on, what do we want to comment on? Of course, I agree, we can't get out over our skis, we can't comment, we can't recommend things that we're not allowed to recommend. But I think the substance of this is really important, and, and we need, I want everyone's, you know, voice and thoughts about that. And I agree, John, that the statutory authority could be best placed at the end of the letter. And, and. So what would the opening be? The opening would be the H D C is concerned, the H D C would like to participate in the conversation, the, you know, what, there are many ways to do it. But do we have to say at the beginning, the H D C is entitled to comment? Is that the most important lead? To use the journalistic term, is that how we want to lead with our, with our comment?
Well, something I know that I've said before, but so much of this project on Hall's Road seems to have been driven by a desire to mimic Lime Street. And we're so far from that. That it doesn't even bear comparison anymore. But somehow, the historic district seems to have been the sort of.
Duplication.
The, the germinating, you know.
But, but, uh, I'll just, one, one counter argument to that, and the one, because I think this is a very important focus, is, is what happens on Hall's Road is not our concern. In other words, what happens on Hall's Road as to how it impacts the historic character of the historic district is our concern.
Right.
You see, so I think, like, everything in, in my mind, every comment that we make has to benchmark against what, what is that, what, what does the development there do to affect the historic character of Lime Street?
Excellent.
Versus the other way around.
Something to keep.
Versus saying that they need to use Lime Street as the model, that's up to them.
No, no, they have used.
They have.
Statement of fact.
But that's right, they have used.
Sold it as being something that's going to mimic historic Lime Street.
And they use the scale of Lime Street and the facade of Lime Street.
And what is being proposed is.
Quite good, yeah. Unfortunately, I need to run, I have eleven o'clock, so. I think we should, I have to go prep.
I think we should definitely cite the statutory rule. One forty-seven dash one forty-seven C sub J. John, you would be good at this, you know, which gives us the purported authority to make a comment, or comments, kind of give us some, some clout, more than just a homeowner or citizen. I think that should be at the beginning, personally.
Yeah, well.
Iraq, John.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm ambivalent about the beginning or end, I just do think it should be in there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I agree, definitely, I just, I don't think that needs to be, or, I don't think that's the most important emphasis for this letter. If anybody challenges us, how can you say such a thing? You're the, you know, we can always say we have statutory authority, and I think it maybe could conclude the letter. But there are other substantive matters that we haven't talked about, which I think, you know, are much, are, are important to include. So the substantive matters, what do we want to say concerns us? And what do we want to conclude with in addition to our statutory authority? Do we want to make a recommendation? Do we want to say we oppose the overlay district? Do we want to request that all zoning be considered later together in the, in the ongoing process, rather than Hall's Road being singled out? Do we want to make a specific comment or suggestion, or take a stand in any way? Or do we want to just say, here, here's what we're thinking?
I think we could advocate for having this decision be part of the ongoing rewrite. I don't see why it wouldn't be. This is the, one of the biggest decisions the town has faced. And we've engaged a company to rewrite our zoning regulations, and why wouldn't this be part of that process? That's, just seems like a very rational argument.
But, again, Dini is going to put something together, addressing, and maybe if you send that out beforehand, we can. Can we comment on a proposed letter or issues for the meeting via email?
Maybe what we can do is.
Not in a group, not in a group email, but I think we could have an individual conversation with, 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 or, you know, send your reactions to, to Carolyn. You just can't have a communication between more than two people.
Okay. Got you.
Either, either in person or online, is my understanding.
So Dini drafts the letter, we all then send comments to Carolyn, you don't want to do the letter?
No, we, we've been working on it together, so.
Okay, but then.
You can send it to either one of us.
We could send it to you individually.
Yes, and we can.
Because that would be not more than two, and you could comment individually.
Yes.
And if you, if you, if you, any of you have some specific point you think's important to make, that occurs to you, just email one of us.
But before we conclude, could I ask, is everyone in agreement on the three points that Dini mentioned at the start of the conversation? That three things that we do include in the letter are concerns about traffic, concerns about lighting, and concerns about the mimic, mimicry of the design, however we decide to phrase that.
Yes.
Are those the three, and is there anything else? I don't see that concern about sidewalks. You know, we're not concerned about the sidewalks at this point, we're concerned about the zoning overlay application.
What is you concerned about the mimic, mimicry of the?
As, as Russ said, does it devalue the historic character, impact and impact negatively, or devalues, if that might be too strong a word, of the historic character of the historic district? So in addition to those three points, traffic, lighting, and mimicry, I'm just shorthanding the third one. Is there anything else that you all believe should be included in the substance part of the letter?
Well, you had some.
What are the comments we want to make?
I have four. I had about the positive response, but maybe we don't, you know, have to go there.
And then, but maybe we have some time to think about.
I think maybe scale and density should be mentioned, right?
That's everyone's concern.
That's everyone's.
Everyone's concern, but we can. So that's four things. that I have in my mind.
And the three-story parking lot.
I thi- I think in the, I think those are fine, I think in the phrasing though, uh, I think Russ hit the nail on the, on, on the head. We, 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 we need to try to in, in general, come up with phrasing that links all of this to effect on the district.
Are we concerned that the aquifer in the historic district
Good point.
Would be affected?
Good point.
So you have all these homes that are
And is that, is the aquifer in the historic district are we can only talk about the historic character, then maybe we, I don't know, I'm just
It has to be all facts.
Yeah.
I, my
I think there are lots of people.
My reaction is that that's, that's kind of beyond what we're
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, though.
Comment on, and I think a lot of people will be making that point, but I'm not sure we should.
Right. Okay. And what about the conclusion? Do we, what do we want to say? Do we just want to say these are our concerns, period? Or do we want to say we recommend, make a zoning recommendation, period?
I think that's hard to do, probably, you know.
Maybe that's what our meeting is all about. Special meeting is this, deciding
Helpful to have a head start, though, if you don't mind. Where you, what you're thinking.
I don't know yet, personally.
I don't know, I mean
Okay, I'll try it that way. And then we can
I think suggesting that
Fair enough.
Such a massive decision for the town be, did the decision for this be delayed and be included in the, in the, in the overall thinking about the
The zoning regs.
About the zoning regulations.
How far out is that process going to take?
I think, John, didn't Eric Knapp tell us it was going to be a year?
Yeah, at, at least. But I think that's roughly the goal.
Yeah.
Stretch it to five.
I think you're really going to be tackling it this, this, this year.
I think people expect this meeting on Thursday in the middle school will be, on February twenty-seventh, will be packed with people, at the prior zoning meeting, the Hall's Road supporters attended, but there was no opposition organized, but now there's an active and vocal opposition. So I, I think there will probably be a lar- a large group.
But it's really emails that need to go in because the meeting will be closed at nine o'clock. They have said that.
At, at what?
Nine o'clock.
They said a hard stop, and, and I think they did that last year. Or last time that this came about.
Yeah, okay, good.
Did they reach a, a decision about anything at that meeting?
They're supposed to.
No, they have, I think they have sixty-five days after the meet, close of the meeting to make a decision.
Okay.
Good, all right, well
That's what they did on the last Hall's Road issue, they didn't decide at the at the meeting where the hearing closed, they, they waited a couple months.
So we've determined that we're going to have a meeting on the eighteenth at nine AM in this room. Martha, are you still there? I think, Martha?
Yep, I'm still there.
Yeah, okay. Um, so would you ask if we could use the, the room?
I have a question. That meeting will of course be publicized. And therefore, that meeting could have a large attendance with comments, I mean, we need to anticipate what we're doing in this, in this special meeting, I think. That's why I'm recommending we think ahead to what do we expect? It may not just be the, the six of us sitting around a table. Anyone is allowed to attend, and there may be a lot of interest in what we're going to say, both by people who both, on both sides.
What would be the call to the
So I, I wonder, I just want to think this through before we move any farther.
But we don't have to necessarily allow public comment, do we?
I don't know.
John?
I, I, we don't, I don't want this to, I personally don't want this to be a circus about the, about the HTC.
We, we don't have to allow I don't think we have to allow public comment. I mean, there are, the planning committee, when they considered this, allowed no public comment.
Right.
So I don't, I'm not suggesting what we do about this, but it concerns me.
Right, but again, we're just deciding on what we would like to say to the zoning commission. And that's our decision, that shouldn't be open to public comment, frankly. I don't believe. What do you say the reason for the special meeting is?
Yes, that's quite
So we can just give it a, a, a
Benign?
A neutral sort of
Benign, generic title.
That doesn't attract
Special meeting. How about just special meeting?
Yeah.
The agenda says the agenda says
New business.
Discuss, uh, public comment, new business.
No, no, we can't, we can't, we have to, uh, my understanding is we have to give a topic because, because a special meeting has to be confined to a special topic. If you just say, uh, new business, then we could talk about anything, and it's and the purpose of the special meeting has not been disclosed.
How about proposed letter to uh, zoning commission Ray Hall's Road overload, overlay district?
I like overload.
How about something more, that's how about something more general?
Yeah. Current zoning proposals. Is that, is that, is that your impacts on historic district or something?
Item three B on the previous meeting.
All right, can we think about this before we
Let's think about this, and we, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.